Good evening, everyone. We'll open the meeting. Can we please stand for the pledge?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, individual with liberty and justice for all.
I apologize ahead of time for my voice. It might go in and out, but I'll bear with it. We'll open the meeting up now to public comment. Anyone has any public comment for agenda items only in the front end, please come up to the mic, state your name, and ask your question. Okay, we'll close public comment. We have a few special presentations this evening. The first one being Leaders of the Pack. I will ask the elementary school to come up first.
So, just as they're getting ready to come up, I just want to acknowledge that these leaders of the pack were chosen almost three months ago to join us at the January meeting, and that got snowed out. And then the February meeting, and that got snowed out. We were able to have our board meetings, but we did not have these folks come out to be recognized. So, we are so thankful that the weather is with us tonight, and we're able to honor these three individuals.
Good evening, everyone. Hello, hi. So, this is our leader of the pack for March, Memphis, right? Both starting with the letter M, right? This is Memphis Pacolero. He is a kindergarten teacher in Mrs. Campain and Mrs. Hajba's class. They said some wonderful things about you. Just gonna read a few. Memphis is our classroom leader of the pack because he's a good role model. He always follows directions and he helps others. During classroom instruction, Memphis always tries his best. He has fun, and he listens and completes the task at hand. Coach Helmer, your physical ed teacher, said that you are always prepared and eager to participate. He has a smile on his face every day and displays a positive attitude. And for this and many other reasons, you are our leader of the pack.
Ready? Look this way. Congratulations. So, the middle school leader of the pack is an eighth grader, Henry Presnyak, and your teachers had many nice things to say about you, and I can't wait to share them. So, Ms. Lady, your English teacher, said that Henry is a kind and thoughtful student. He's respected by his peers for his serious attitude towards his academics. He's also a good friend to others. I personally know I can always count on Henry to be attentive, organized, and prepared. His scholarly persona sets the tone for the class. Mr. Brennan, your social studies teacher, says Henry is a mature learner with a steady approach to learning, a future leader in the making. I truly agree you could teach. Mrs. Barton comments that Henry is a kind, thoughtful student that is compassionate and understanding to his peers, especially the ones who need it most. He's a hardworking student that is extremely respectful to his teachers and is a pleasure to interact with. Henry reflects on everything and is a great insight beyond his age. Mrs. Bulmer, her Spanish teacher, comments that Henry leads by example. He always tries his best, even when he finds the material to be challenging. He's patient with others, even when they can be distracting and bothersome. He acts responsibly and is always courteous and respectful. He knows when and how to advocate for himself. He is a diligent and honest young man. Mrs. Ozzy, your art teacher, says that Henry has a reserved calmness about him, unlike many peers in his group. His vantage point seems to allow him to make mature decisions and have a perspective to engage and disengage as he navigates the distractions that might arise in class. He's attentive and responsible in the art room, qualities that she is so grateful for. And finally, Mr. Weaver, your science teacher, says that Henry is a student who needs by example. He's always on time and prepared for every class. Henry's maturity is beyond the typical eighth grade student. Overall, Henry is an excellent selection for the leader of the pack. Great job. Congratulations.
Good evening, everybody. I would like to introduce Kai Roper for this month's or several months leader of the pack for the high school level. I want to thank Kai's family for being here. I'm very happy that you're here. You should all be very proud of Kai. I'm going to read five blurs of Kai's teachers. The first one, Ms. Winston, who Kai has for math. "I've had the pleasure of having Kai two years in a row, and she never ceases to put a smile on my face. Her inquisitive approach to problem solving is fascinating to watch her, and which is outgoing. Her caring demeanor lends itself to helping those around her. Kai is always striving to go further and works endlessly all the time to get to her goals." Mr. Welch, who Kai has for French. "Kai is enthusiastic, diligent, and a gifted language student who participates often in class. She speaks and writes French extremely well and approaches the study of language and cultures with empathy and curiosity. I know that her character and thoughtfulness will take her far into her future endeavors. I wish her the best." Mr. Rizzo, who Kai has for science firmly, and he is here tonight. "I get the privilege to teach her in her AP college biology. I would describe her as the ultimate craftsman. Kai is kind, courteous, and motivated. What I find interesting is that Kai is not motivated by a grade, but rather the chance to learn slash master something new. I truly believe Kai is grateful for her entire academic experience. She shows this through a wonderfully captivating smile all the time." Ms. Saylor, who Kai has for history. "What makes Kai special is that she's one of the few students who learns for the sake of knowing. If she's not on task during class, it is because the task at hand has sparked some genuine curiosity, and she's followed that journey and brought the entire class with her along. In the end, the discussion usually deepens the conversation, and I often end up learning right along her. Kai works hard and earns good grades, but she does the work for a different kind of reward and motivates others around her to do the same. She's truly a teacher's dream. This type of intrinsic motivation makes her truly stand out as leader of the pack at the high school." And last but not least, Mr. Tatum, who Kai has for English. There are a ton of complimentary things I can say about Kai, but I think the thing that really stands out for me is the way she inspires her peers, whether it's by sharing an idea aloud during discussion or privately sharing something she wrote at her table to help another student get started. Kai motivates those around her without even necessarily trying to. And it isn't purely an academic form of motivation either, simply by being warm, funny, empathetic, approachable, and curious. She causes those around her to elevate their game. She'd never take credit for it. She might even deny it. Do you deny it? She just goes about her business, being her authentic self, and that alone makes others want to be better. And to me, that's leadership. So, Kai, you had many wonderful things said about you tonight. So, congratulations to Kai Roper.
Congratulations. Sorry. He has it on timer.
Again, on behalf of the entire Board of Education, congratulations to all our leaders of the pack. Job well done. Our next presentation, Mr. Murphy will come up and introduce two individuals who've been accepted to Boy State, which is some honor to be introduced into. So, I ask Mr. Murphy to come up and introduce the two candidates.
Thank you, Mr. Barone. Good evening, members of the board. Zachary and Michael, can you please join me up here? Zach, right here. Michael, right here. Face that way. So, American Legion Boy State is among the most respected and selective educational programs of government instruction for U.S. high school students. A participatory program in which students become part of the operation of local, county, and state government. Boy State was founded in 1935. At Boy State, participants learn the rights, privileges, and responsibilities of franchised citizens. The training is objective and centers on the structure of city, county, and state governments. Operated by students elected to various offices, Boy State activities include legislative sessions, court proceedings, law enforcement presentations, assemblies, bands, choruses, and recreational programs. American Legion posts select high school juniors to attend the Boy State program. In most cases, individual expenses are paid by a sponsoring post, a local business, or another community-based organization. Michael Secor and Zachary Hazer, congratulations on being chosen to participate in Boy State through the American Legion Post 193 here in Highland that I am a proud member of. This is a remarkable achievement that reflects your outstanding leadership qualities and dedication to your community. Boy State provides an invaluable opportunity to engage with peers from diverse backgrounds, develop essential leadership skills, and gain a deeper understanding of civic responsibility. Your selection is a testament to your exemplary character and potential to make a positive impact in not only your school but local community and beyond. Embrace this opportunity with enthusiasm and determination, and let your participation in Boy State be a stepping stone towards even greater accomplishments in the future. We are incredibly proud of you and look forward to seeing the incredible contributions you will undoubtedly make during this experience and beyond. Congratulations once again, and best wishes for a very rewarding and enriching Boy State program. Go in front of the podium.
One more. Congratulations to Zach and Michael. An honor well deserved. Our next presentation is by PBIS. It's in regards to our cell phone survey, so I would ask Mr. Murphy to come up.
Hi again. So, in the last several board meetings, the topic of technology use in cell phones, computers, laptops, et cetera, has been something that we've been discussing. And for tonight, in response to those discussions, we've asked members of the high school PBIS team to come talk a little bit about some of their findings and the discussions and work that they have done as well. So, Dr. Path and Mr. Ryan Azoni, can you please come on up?
So, thank you for allowing us to address you tonight and to tell you a little bit about what the PBIS team at the high school has been doing. Just quick review, what the PBIS committee is sort of devoted to, and by the way, it's both of us as well as a group of some other teachers, our social worker. We try to focus on issues in the building that relate to school climate, to setting positive expectations for behavior. In the past, we've worked on issues, you know, for example, planning freshman orientation. So, we bring freshmen to the high school every spring and summer to set expectations, teach them--is it okay if I don't use this, by the way? Can you hear me? Okay. To teach them about how the high school might be different from the middle school and sort of like those stuff, right? It's all very proactive and positive. And from the beginning of this school year, it became clear to us, as it has to all of you, that students on their cell phones during class are presenting a problem. It's in many cases a barrier to learning. It's an issue, speaking as a Dignity Act coordinator, it's an issue that comes up in more Dignity Act reports than not in terms of cyberbullying or making confidence worse. So, the PBIS committee began talking about how can we help, right? It's a building-wide issue. We're not going to solve it one kid at a time. Let's get some data. Let's talk about how we can help. So, starting in January and moving a little bit into February, we held what are called community circles with every faculty member and every student in the building. So, we started them with faculty, and then we were having PE classes to hold small group discussions centered around the idea of how do you use your cellphone in class? What are the positives? What are the negatives? What do you see as teachers? What do you see as students? What do we need to be aware of? If we're thinking about any sort of change in policy or procedure, we wanted to get input from every single person who was potentially impacted, right? So, what you have in front of you is sort of a very brief summary of a lot of the data we had, right? And on the front, we have word clouds. The first two questions are really where we have a lot of discussion from students about how do you see cell phones being used? How do you use your phone? And then on the back, we worked really hard to summarize probably--
Ten pages?
Yeah, easily. Ten written pages of notes from each community circle into some relevant bullet points. So, yeah, so I think, I mean, the first two questions sort of explain themselves, but just a couple things that we wanted to highlight that we found. When you look at how you see cell phones being used versus how you use your phone, there are some differences. But in both cases, things like social use, music, media, those are all popular. And how do you see cell phones being used? Students do talk about using them to do their work for like actual school purposes. But really, then you also see, again, there's just lots of things here pertaining to social media, right? Snapchat, media, talk, all kinds of stuff like that. But I think there's more specific data on the backside. So, I won't go over and read all of these. I can do that on their own time. I don't want to waste anyone's time here. But some of the things that we found is that students did or do genuinely like to use their phones to get some schoolwork done. It could be something like taking a photo of a project, upload to SchoolAg, right? So that a teacher has, you know, something to grade, like maybe a piece of artwork that, you know, some teachers seem to like things to be uploaded to SchoolAg just for posterity or just to help them keep track of things, right? So, that was like a good positive use. Students also commented that the current sports are extra curriculum. Sometimes schedules change, practices change, games change, things like that. And it's an easy way for them to communicate with their parents. They get up there with their coaches, things like that. Those are all positive uses. Some negative uses, most students admitted that they find them a little distracting and somewhat addictive. And they also themselves saw that cyberbullying was an issue. As some of the faculty echoed, right? We have, you know, you have instances where things get passed around on Snapchat, get passed around through texts, and it sort of amplifies the situation.
Or it starts with the weekend and then it's brought into school.
Exactly. Right? And then like you said, a lot of that's involved some sort of fundamental social media. And really, I mean, all the faculty seem to agree that like something needs to be, you know, something, you know, whether it's through the PIS, whether it's something through the school, you know, we're all trying our best. And moving forward, one thing that became really clear, it's underthoughts for faculty, but honestly, students mentioned it too. There's this perception that we can multitask in class, that if I'm listening to you speak about history, I could also be listening to music, and that, you know, helps me focus, right? We know, and there's hard research, that that's actually not going to be focused, right? But there's a common perception out there that students may use these in ways that they generally don't. So, moving forward, what the PBIS team, which is one of the many things we want to do, is provide resources to students to understand how you can use this effectively and maybe how you think you are, but it's not, right? We can work that at health classes. We can work that and do a lot of different discussions in a lot of different classes. We also identify, and Mr. Fisher-- Mr. Fisher helped us resolve some issues related to teachers kind of asking students to get on websites, you know, for faculty practice or for research. That we're in it, right? And part of the community circle process is we're going to generate a list of websites that teachers really have legitimate structural interest in, but they're going to block in some certain instances. And Mr. Fisher helped us with that. So, we're taking really concrete steps to make this easier, because we also want to make it easier for students to use their textbooks and app online or telephone sometimes. And that's another positive thing that we want to do. Yeah. And I guess just one last note, things that we're, you know, looking towards next year. We want to come up with some instruction that we can incorporate into things like freshman orientation. And we want to come up with a sort of menu of options for teachers to use, you know, integrate into the curriculum to, you know, address issues as they arise. Like, we really just want to provide a wide toolbox for teachers in the high school. Yeah. But there's plenty of anecdotes on there. You could probably get you more data if you wanted it. But we just want to highlight some of the work we've been doing. Any questions?
So, we got this data about a year ago?
No, this was within the last month.
Oh, okay. Very recent then. Very good. I think one of the comments that I had, or some of the discussion that I've been heading up, really don't have to do with, you know, I understand acceptable use in schools. We do have to also remember we're dealing with adolescents, we're dealing with minors, and they think they could do a lot of things, but as we already had some admittance to, they really can't, right? You see, I have a sign up here that says I Stand With Nicet. The New York State Union of Teachers just put out an article in their periodical that really talks about all the challenges that students are facing. They're burdened by these cell phones. You mentioned the bullying. I think you mentioned the word "a lot." I think at the last board meeting, we made it very clear that we're losing a lot of time, instructional time, that we can never get back, that these devices lead to students being off-focus and off-task. As much as we'd like to think that they still positively contribute, and I'm sure that they do, it's just when we look at policy and making decisions at this level, and let me be clear, the board didn't go looking for this. Administration didn't bring this to the board. Faculty did, right? Dr. Murphy didn't bring this to the board. Faculty did, because it's a problem in the building. So, it is difficult, and we've been going back and forth. But what became, I think, vividly clear at the last meeting is that the loss of instructional time is great, and we're, the numbers that we were using at that time, about thirty or thirty-five hours over the course of the year for an average student, was really a low number. So, I appreciate the data. It's in some ways inconclusive, like a lot of the data we got. So, the board is still left with an ongoing discussion and I think a decision to make. But I thank you for, you know, the value add.
Yeah. And to your point, whatever the policy or procedure ends up looking like, we are ready to help teach students, you know, why it is the way it is, right? So, if a teacher asks to put their phone away, it's to avoid a power struggle. Let's give the tools to the teacher to implement that. That's how the students understand why that's the expectation. That's what we're ready to do.
It sounds like the progress and the discussions at education level is actually making some decisions and moving past that and getting on to instruction. So, I know we're going to talk more about that today. But I did, it's hard to get this article if you're not a member, and I am not. So, I got a copy, and I cut it up. I'm going to just share it with board members. You can take a picture. You might have access to this document. But, you know, it talks about all the toll on kids' mental health, and educators are fighting back. The amount of time spent on, look, the biggest words in your survey are social and media. They're not any of your learning portals. It's not discovery learning. It's not these things that we know that they should be accessing for school. So, that's the draw, and that's the challenge in overcoming this tremendous loss, this theft of instructional time. Thank you.
Mike, it's not in our agenda later on to have further discussion with cell phones. So, if you want, we can have that discussion right now and continue it for a little bit, and then go into our budget presentation.
Absolutely.
I guess my question would be twofold. What I'm hearing is the policy, if we establish a more rigorous policy, it would give teeth to the faculty to enforce. But on the other side, a student handbook, which kind of addresses the use and not use of cell phones, is very important. Our superintendent gave us a couple copies of area schools, and one from Valley Central is very interesting. I read the whole thing. If you haven't, read the one from Valley Central, and which addresses cellphone use in their student handbook. So, I think it's a twofold approach. We address it with policy, but it also has to be reinforced with the student handbook.
And you found--
And then freshman orientation, you hit it on the head. That's when you really got instilled in these students the do's and don'ts of cell phones.
And you found that the approved use and the unallowed use, the misuse in our code of conduct doesn't address it the same way VC does?
I think that our code of conduct of the student handbook, I mean, we do have to, it's code of conduct which is the penalty vague, but the handbook directs the do's and don'ts. And what the expectation is of students potentially might be. So, I think we have to look at--
Yeah.
Anyone else have any?
Yeah, please. Let's hear from some other folks, because I did draft some policy, and I'll share a little bit of that.
Sure.
I'm not loud enough. I think it has to be multi-layered, right? So, I think there has to be a policy. I think it has to reflect it in the student handbook, and then there also needs to be in the code of conduct, so that it is in all three spots. I think addressing it at freshman orientation is a great idea, and I then think being able to kind of see what happens with that is important. I found it interesting in some of the data that there was not a lot of policy at a lot of the other schools. A lot of it is just how to use it, the do's and don'ts in the student handbook-- A lot of it is just how to use it, the do's and don'ts in the student handbook, and then some schools don't use their code of conduct, but it was really the student handbook. And being able to provide examples to the students of an appropriate way to use your cellphone versus not an appropriate way to use your cellphone. So I think that approach, and that's why I kind of, I preferred Valley Central's way that they did that, is because it does show you the do's and don'ts of usage of that, and I think that's important.
If I may really quickly, not that this goes into the level of policy, but what the PBIS team wants to help with is the whys of the do's and don'ts. Because if we are asking students to do something or to change something, it helps to explain why, right? And to teach them, so that's where we're geared at.
You're kind of stealing my thunder, I wanted to say thank you to PBIS. I greatly, as a board, appreciate the input, because we are a community and you're accessing community voices that we don't necessarily have access to. And I think that what you're saying, you know, is very much, it's the difference between a dictatorship and a community coming together to form a society with societal rules. And I think very much here, we're forming a community in a society which everyone willingly ascribes to, and it's very important for us to recognize those voices, and I do thank PBIS for that. It sounds like we're all heading towards the same page of a cultural shift. Not that it intentionally shifted into one culture, but I think, like I said, I mentioned in another meeting, this is a relatively new thing, and we're going twenty years into this technology. And it's just grown so exponentially in its abilities, and the way it's, the majority of the apps are designed, they're actually technically designed to be addictive with minor points of gratification. So they're actually rewiring our adult brains and our children's brains. So I think, I think it speaks to us as a community that we've become aware of this and the dangers it can present, but we also want to be sensitive to what point we, we don't want to feel like we're being dictatorial. We want to strengthen the community. So I fully support what you're saying, I think we have to hit all of those points, I think we have to communicate it, why we want this to be our culture. And to me, this is so positive what you did, because it speaks to the recognition even from the students of what we're seeing and what we're reading about in the data. I think another aspect, another layer, Mike, I think I shared that article about, that came out, and parents don't even realize how they're contributing to the distraction. And I'm guilty, even my son, right now in college, I'll text him in the middle of the day, "Hey, what about this?", and I'll get back, "Dad, I'm in class." You know, and they're showing that this is, parents are inadvertently, because we love our children and we want to make sure they're safe, or a doctor's appointment changes or the schedules change. We don't think twice about picking up and texting them, but they'll be in the middle of a lesson, and we've now pulled them away from the lesson, and it's going to take them fifteen minutes to refocus because they're adolescents. And so it's, I really do appreciate that we're becoming aware of this and we're trying to address it. So I just wanted to say thank you to the PBIS for that as well.
I do believe that the text that you're talking about and all those policies does exist. And I don't know, I don't know if it's going to make a difference. Certainly raising awareness, maybe some training does. But I do believe all schools are wrestling with this issue of losing instructional time to the cellphone. It's a powerful device, we know it. The other piece that I'm concerned about is that students don't have the 21st century skills. So when I'm hearing that, you know, the Chromebook isn't charged and bringing a device back and forth, they have no problem bringing their cellphone, I understand it fits in their pocket. But really, in the world of higher ed and in the world of work, you're going to have a laptop or, you know, you're going to have a device that you need to maintain, you bring back and forth, you access things with it. And, you know, what I'm hearing are, kids don't really have those skills to be responsible for that device. And so I do believe there's a 21st century skill element here. The Chromebook doesn't need to be charged every night. It's charged, even at full use, it can run ten hours straight. So, you know, for two days, that thing should be able to run without a charge, it's not as much of a barrier as it might sound. But I, in thinking about how, what would a policy look like, because you're right, this is new ground, nobody has it. They all have the student use of personal technology, and we all passed it when Erie One put out the template four years ago. But here's the problem, we know more now. So, the student personal use policy, because what I was proposing was not a ban on cell phones in the school, right? It was a, when you're in instructional time, it is off your person, and I'm going to read a draft. But it seemed like we needed two policies in place, that we would rework certainly the student use of personnel, personal technology. But then we would also need a student use of school-issued device. So what does that sound like? And I'll just finish this and then we could talk, because, look, I can motion and I could bring drafts, but if I don't get a second, this goes nowhere but good discussion. If we get a vote and it goes down, it goes nowhere but more discussion and, you know, you kind of have an idea where each board member sits. But this is the beginning of the student use of personal technology, which is a policy we have now, this is draft. The board seeks, bear with me. "The board seeks to maintain a safe and secure environment for students and staff. Advances in technology have made it possible to expand the learning environment. However, in the past four years since this policy was first passed, the board recognizes that instructional time lost to misuse of personal technology outweighs the benefits. This policy puts forth the expectation that the use of personal devices is prohibited in all instructional spaces. Furthermore, students may not have a personal device on their person during all instructional times. Devices must be stored in a bookbag or other bag or other location, set to silent, so as not to disturb the student during daily lessons." These policies go on and talk about instructional spaces and non-instructional spaces, and we were certainly clarified. So we said that would work in tandem with student use of school-issued device policy. It starts the same way, the board seeks to maintain, past four years, technology outweighs the benefit, personal use of technology outweighs the benefits. This policy puts forth the expectation that the school-issued device is the only device to be used in all instructional spaces. So it does draw a very clean line. We could talk about study halls, we could talk about after-school, before-school, lunchtimes, hallways. You can access your phone, just can't. When the bell rings, you put it away, and you pay attention to your teacher for forty-two minutes. And if it buzzes, it's not going to bother you because it's silent. It's not buzzing around in your pocket bothering you. This is the friction points, day in and day out, that steal valuable instructional time. So, those are my thoughts. I'm prepared to take any questions, talk it out further. Thank you.
Mike, since you are on the policy committee, could you possibly share that with the rest of the committee? And then disseminate it to the rest of the board for our next meeting and we can have further discussion?
Yeah, I don't mind sharing it, absolutely, you got it.
Anybody have any comments concerning what Mike just read? And again, like Mike prefaced before, we're not here to set this policy at our next meeting. I mean, this is discussion and hopefully we can implement this come September. So we've got a couple more months to work on it, develop it, and put it in policy. And again, from PBIS or faculty, HTA, HSA, come forward to us with any of your concerns. I mean, and we'll incorporate all that and have some discussion. I mean, this is a, this is a decision that's going to be made by the board with collaboration with all the stakeholders involved. It's not a one-sided decision. Anyone else have any comments? Okay.
Good evening, everybody. This is the fourth budget presentation for the 24th budget planner. And I just wanted to recap a little bit of our whole entire presentation, that what a budget is, is the financial plan that supports a program. So the main revenue sources that we get to support our budget are through taxes, through tax, and through the, so as many-
I'm sorry, I don't mean to interrupt. Can you both turn on your mics just so maybe the public can capture a little of that? I noticed she's not mic'd up.
It was red. So the two main sources of revenue that support our budget are the tax, school taxes and state aid. And as many of you know, we have received negative stamp, negative foundation aid from the state this year. We are hoping that Save Harmless will return, which will help us gain some more of that revenue. We also used to receive a percent increase, which has also been taken away from us this year. But we want to make sure that the budget supports our program, the financial plan that supports the program. So going into tonight's presentation, we're going to discuss the revenue and where we found some increases where we could go up in. We're going to have a discussion about the balanced expense budget. Our revenues need to equal our expenses, and that's where this year becomes a little bit of a challenge for us. We are going to talk a little bit about our BOSI's expense budget review and the reductions in expenses. And tonight, Mr. Frier will also partner up with me for some of this presentation. So again, the two highlighted numbers are where we could see a change and where we did see a change. And at the bottom of this presentation, where the link is also on our website, is where you can reach out to the legislator to talk about restoring Save Harmless. As of right now, there are no changes in state aid. We are hoping with the legislative budget that we will see an increase with that. Our Medicaid revenue has stayed the same as well as our pilots. Taking another look into our other revenue sources, where we saw a BOSI's refund decrease. We also spoke with our auditors and from that class, they do believe that the interest rates will still be a little higher. So we're estimating that revenue for interest income to come in a little bit higher for that. Still planning on using our inter-fund transfer from capital to pay for some of our debt service, using the same amount of fund balance. So those are our reserves as last year. And our tax levy, which has gone to the cap, but not over, for the total increase for 1.5856 as our increase in revenue.
So that link that's at the bottom of that screen, I want to thank the community for doing their part. I do think that many of our community members have reached out, they've sent letters to the legislators and to the governor. That is a one-stop link, you send the letter and it goes to three places, the governor, your local senator, and your assembly person. There is no resolution as of yet, but both legislative bodies have submitted their response to the governor's budget. And both of those legislative budgets are calling for Save Harmless to be put back into effect, and they're advocating for a 3% increase. So for those that have been following along, that does take us back to a previous presentation where Save Harmless would bring a small amount back, but that 3% would bring a larger amount back. And that's important to realize, because what you're going to see tonight is our response to where we are as of today. And as of today, we can only go with what the governor's proposed budget is, but very hopeful that the legislature sticks to their guns and returns funding as they promised that they would be trying to do.
So currently, with the increase in revenue, our draft revenue budget is fifty-four million, fifty-nine thousand and forty-six dollars. But our draft expenses are fifty-five million, eight-hundred-and-twenty-three thousand, four-hundred-and-seventy-six dollars, which makes this a current difference of 1.764, four-hundred-and-thirty dollars.
And some might be remembering that just at the last presentation, we were at 1.86, right around there, of a deficit between the two, between the two budgets. I would say that the slide that she showed earlier where that interest was added in, that helped to offset this number so that we could bring it down slightly. But this is the current deficit that we need to respond to. It was 1.86 at the last meeting, we were able to find funding to get us down to 1.76. And believe me, we continue to look on a daily basis for other places to pull some dollars together, so that our response can be changed accordingly. Okay, so this next part, if you don't mind, I'm just going to sit here because I think you can hear me better. The difficult part when we're doing any of these responses is, the largest part of our budget is faculty and staff. But as you might remember from a previous, previous presentation, we were taking a five-step approach, and we were going to look at administration, we were going to look at supplies and equipment. We were going to look at mandated versus non-mandated courses, course enrollments, and class sizes. So we've done that exercise, we've done it multiple times. Administration from the district level did it separately from the building level, then we brought the building level administrators in, and we had them do it again. And then we compared our findings and came up with areas that we felt, although we, none of us think these are great responses. We are charged with the response of coming up with that 1.76 million dollars to change that deficit. And as, as the legislature hopefully comes through with their promise, we will be revising these responses that you're going to see here this evening. So first, we're going to talk about the response that we were able to come up with from district-wide resources. So first on our list, we currently have a data administrator. That person is integral to making sure that our data is accurate with the state. But again, as we said, that this was going to be something that was felt across the district and all departments, administration was one of those areas. So the impact on program is that our district administration and building principals will need to be picking up some additional tasks, should that position remain part of the response. A few years back, we added a district-wide head custodian to help with the responsibilities with operations and maintenance. In this response, we will be removing that position so that we can recapture some savings. Currently, we have a vacant custodian position that has not been filled for some time. We will take that out of the budget, the funding for that out of the budget for this upcoming school year. Additionally, we have had more than four bus driver vacancies for the last school year. However, after speaking with our transportation department, we do feel that although those positions are valuable and we need them, we haven't been filling them, but we've been holding on to salary lines for those positions. So we can't reduce the full amount, because many of those positions are taken by substitutes, or someone doing a double route, or pulling somebody from a different department who happens to have a bus driver license. So we do need funding to be able to fulfill the responsibility of transporting our students to and from school every day. So right now, the four of those eight to ten positions that are vacant, we're going to remove to answer this response. We currently have someone working part-time in our technology office fielding phone calls from across the district. We are going to have to go back to a system of messages being left or work tickets being left for our technology director. And he will retrieve those throughout the day and assign the jobs to different- assign the jobs to different members of the technology department. So the office assistant would be cut. We have programs Bridge, PBIS, SAIL, and TLC. Those programs, we feel, are very important, but we were able to find a way to fund them through title funds rather than through our general budget. So those are amendments that we need to make to the way we've used some of our title funds in the past, and we feel that this is a very small amount of money, but it was an amount that we felt was going to be important if we were looking at the overall picture. Supplies and equipment, some of you have heard me say, this budget is not going to be balanced on pens and pencils and paper. But I want to thank the administrative team, who looked at every single budget line across the district, and with the help of really our maintenance department, they found some, some lines that we are going to forego for this upcoming year to answer this budget response. But again, for the most part, those were small decreases in general budgets across the district. We've done this many, many years. Years ago, when I was sitting at the assistant principal position at the middle school, we cut every line a couple of years in a row by 10%, 10%, 10%. When you don't have a lot of funding in those lines to begin with, we really decimated those lines. And unfortunately, when we rolled the budget forward from year to year, we have not really been recouping those cuts that were made years ago. So yes, we were able to identify a few, there weren't a lot, but it was enough to help us bring up a district response of $526,130. This is the part that hurts. Not that that doesn't hurt, but as the former elementary principal, this part of the slide is ripping my heart out. But again, as part of the response, we needed to look at everything. We have one teacher at the elementary school who is retiring. We planned to not fill that position, so through attrition, we were able to gain some funding. We do have a slight bobble in some special education numbers. Currently, we believe that we're able to cut one special education position at the elementary school, but I caution us that that may be something that has to be brought back as we move forward. We may need to find funding if our special education numbers grow. With the reductions in some class sizes, we are able to, we're able to see less classes taking regular physical education or general physical education. So our physical education teachers at the elementary school will be taking care of the adaptive physical education requirements. So that's a half of an APE teacher. That is also combined with that person who runs that, that job is also half a teaching assistant, and that's going to show up later in another, another section of this slide. So we'll get back to that. A few years ago, just before COVID, and actually during COVID, we started looking at our academic intervention supports. We believe that these positions are still valuable, however, it's difficult when you're looking at enrollment dropping to say that we need more services in these areas than we had when we had a larger population. So we looked at AIS math, this would be reducing from three AIS math teachers at the elementary school to two. Two is what the elementary school had for a number of years, and actually, at one point, they had one and a half for many more students. So that's another response. Our AIS reading offerings, we went during COVID up to four teachers. We had been at three for a number of years, and when I first started at the elementary school, we had two AIS reading teachers. Again, they're doing incredible work, and I feel that they're extremely important, but again, trying to make this response come together, we had to make some tough choices. So reduction of one AIS reading teacher. A few years back, just before COVID, we started technology at the elementary school. Teachers went to these technology classes with their students, and we feel that although we think it's an important skill that they have a standalone technology class, we do feel that the elementary teachers are able to provide technology within their classroom. So a cut of one technology teacher at the elementary school. Just happening yesterday, we had this on the slide of a school monitor at the elementary school. We did get a retirement, it is not in the board agenda this evening, because it came in after the agenda, but it will be in the next board meeting. So we do have a school monitor that we will not be replacing at the elementary school, and that will reduce coverage in our attendance office, and we will have to have other supports from the other office in place to help with that, with that reduction. One elementary classroom aide, this will reduce classroom supports, and three elementary teaching assistants. It is important to realize with the three teaching assistants that I'm speaking of here, one of them is currently vacant. A person that was a teaching assistant moved into another position a few months back, and seeing what was happening with the budget, we chose to not fill that position during this school year for the remainder of the year, and we won't be filling that for the upcoming year. For total cost savings in the elementary program of $677,300. At the secondary level, we, again, we looked at all of the class sizes, we looked at mandated versus non-mandated, so some electives are going to be difficult to manage here. But class sizes would increase in the social studies classes at the high school, we would be going down by one section, one teacher. ELA, this is actually an ELA position at the middle school, so again, some electives and, electives would be in jeopardy here, and class sizes for some of those English classes would be increased. We have one full-time equivalent technology teacher at the middle school. We will still be within our mandated offerings. This would require that our current high school technology teacher would travel to the middle school for a portion of the day, and some high school electives, because of this decrease, would be, would be impacted. But again, all of our mandated offerings in the technology department at the middle school level would be, would be kept intact. Looking at the next position is a half of an art section, or section, not a section, sorry, a teacher. Again, we will be still able to keep mandated and some elective offerings at the high school level. It would also probably require some reassignment of staffing from across the district. We currently have four art teachers in the district, we would be going down to three and a half. So one would, would need to, to some of those electives here at the high school, but each of the buildings would have a full-time art teacher. Music, again, a half a music teacher. We will still be able to offer mandated music across the secondary level and provide some electives, but some of our individualized choral lessons would be cut because of this, because of this cut. In world language, we currently have a .8 world language French teacher. That would, if we reduced that, we would increase sizes, we would be combining sections. So right now, at the middle school, there are two first-year, two second-year classes, but those enrollments would have to merge together to make one section of first year, one section of second year. We would need a traveling teacher from the secondary, or from the high school to go down to supply those two sections to those students. And then at the upper level, it may, may require some upper-level French, maybe French IV and French V, those would be a combined class. But again, we would not be getting rid of our French program. Again, with just reductions of classroom supports, we have two classroom aides from the secondary level, two and a half teaching assistants from the secondary level. And if you remember, earlier on, I talked about that half of APE from the elementary school, the other half of that position is actually a teaching assistant, so that would be, would be reduced at this time as well, for a total cost savings of $561,000 at the secondary level. So as you see today, this total deficit reduction response equals $1,764,430 in reductions to balance the budget as it is today. This is what we know today. Should the New York State Governor and legislative bodies agree to reinstate funding in the upcoming budget talks, we will most certainly revisit this number at that time and make recommendations to the Board of Education accordingly.
So some of those topics for discussion for our next board meeting. We know that the current status without the administrative response is that 1.764,430. We will still need to continue reviewing special aid placements. We have our BOSI's final service request that comes out April 1st, so that will need to be reviewed again, and we will also need to look at finalizing these reductions. And our next steps, I will continue to work with Dr. Boyd on special ed placements. I will also be working with Mr. Miller to monitor fuel and gas costs for the '24-'25 budget as well. The next are the two propositions that you will see. This is for the two propane buses, which will be proposition one. Proposition two is for the new capital reserve. And again, just to reiterate from last board meeting, the capital reserve that we currently have is expiring. It does have $1.103,928 million in the reserve. We're going to transfer that money into the new reserve when it is approved. So no additional money will be placed into it, it's just moving it into the new reserve to keep it open for the next 10 years.
Can I ask a question about that?
Yes.
Should we not create a new capital reserve? That money, that fund expires, and that money's returned to the taxpayer?
It stays there. It can only be used on a capital project.
Thank you.
And just a point of clarification, and we will be reiterating this in every presentation that we mention about this, because we don't want anyone confused, there is not $10 million that we are putting in a reserve. We are simply opening a bank account and transferring the old reserve money to that account. The board, every single year, determines at the end of the season, so to speak, if they're going to put any additional money into that reserve. What this does is it allows the board to save up to $10 million over 10 years, they can't go over that, but they don't have to fund it to $10 million either. It's just a bank account allows us to go to that amount. Hopefully, that's clear. If not, please let me know, so that I can try to make it clearer. But I don't want anyone thinking that we have $10 million that we're putting into a reserve today.
I just want to add to that. The purpose of the reserve is to help offset any capital projects in the future. The last two capital projects we've had, we established that reserve nine years ago, we were able to put forward two, two capital projects to the taxpayers that were tax-neutral because of the capital reserve. The little bit of money that we put into that reserve is able to offset the overall cost of a proposition to the voters to make it tax-neutral. So there is a benefit there, and again, just like the superintendent said, we can't confuse that, you know, there is 10 million there, we can build up to 10 million. The last project, I think we could go to 7 million. We went, to the last capital reserve, we went nowhere near 2 to 3 million with it. But that was able to offset our capital project. So it's a benefit for the taxpayers.
And this is just our budget schedule. So as of, as it stands right now, our next budget presentation will be on April 2nd, or sometime in April. The next meeting when we would, to adopt the budget is April 16th. It needs to be adopted by April, April 26th to be submitted to the state on the 29th at the last possible date. Does anybody have any questions?
Just a quick point of information. The superintendent mentioned several times in the presentation that enrollment has declined, and cutting some, or increasing class sizes is allowing us to kind of balance the budget. Just a quick piece of information, I went back to 10 years ago, March 4th, 2014, our enrollment was 1,822 students. The last meeting, March 7th, I believe it was, 2024, 10 years later, was 1,505. We have a drop of 317 students in 10 years in the district. So that kind of justifies a lot that's being said with increasing slightly some class sizes, trying to balance the budget. For the board, our next board meeting is April 2nd. It's a day after spring break. I'm sure the governors and the legislatures and the senators are not going to develop a budget by April 1st.
I did read that they are furiously working right now. I read that just before I came to this meeting on an update from NISBA. We get that thing, that thing every day with all the different newspaper articles. The Times Union said that they are feverishly working on this now, but I agree with Mr. Barone, I do not believe they will have this done by April 1st.
So do you see us moving that meeting to the following Tuesday, April 9th, to allow our business official and administrative team to gather together whatever comes about? Hopefully by then, given Albany, another five, six days to develop that budget, that we'll have more information and we can have a better discussion.
I like that idea, because if we have to deal with some scenarios, you know, I'm sure that I'm not alone, and I'd like to give some thoughts around what might be kept and what might not be kept. So, thanks, yeah.
We have one on the 16th, so we'll have the 9th and the 16th, and we can go one more? We don't need the budget to be presented until the 26th?
That is the last possible.
That's the drop date. So we could still, we can go three in a row if we had to. Hopefully we don't need to. So if things don't change, we will move our April 2nd meeting to April 9th. Everybody's okay with that? Unless things change, and we can come back on the 2nd and...
I guess one, the decision might be made if we're going to have it on the 2nd or the 9th, given that spring break is...
I think we're making it right now. Yeah, we can make it right now, we can move it to the 9th. So we'll move the meeting to the 9th. Okay, everybody's... No? We have to move forward. Okay, looking at our consent items, our consent agenda, we're looking at items EA1 Again, like we've done in the past, we can pull individual items out and have a discussion. Or if you need clarification, we could do that, and then we'll entertain it as a consent agenda and move forward on it. So can I have a motion to accept the consent motion by Heather, second by Camille? Any discussion, anybody need clarification? Anybody need clarification?
Yes. Item 3.
Yeah, so I just had a question on that. Mr. Fisher? Or maybe it's, it could be facilities too. The public address system upgrades for 177,000 in our smallest building, the middle school. Can you tell me, is that an IP-based system? Does any of the facilities committee know? That's a big number for a PA system in our smallest building, so.
Okay. Just as clarification, when these proposals, this is going through state contract, these two bid awards. What our sign professionals put the parameters together. They put it out to bid through state contract. So all the components are bought through state contract. Those individuals, like F, fire alarm system upgrades, it's FSNF.
Yeah.
They then bid out to multiple electrical contractors.
All right, so I got you. I don't want to hold it up. I know it's all on the up and up. It's just a large number, but I know labor is the highest it's ever been. Trying to get components is very difficult. If you could just get back to me on, is that an IP-based system or a wired system?
I will say that that is a negotiated price that we were able to get down.
I was just going to say that, yes.
Both of those prices, the reason they were not on the original back when we did the rest in the capital projects, we were trying to negotiate those prices down.
So that would mean that the bids came in were even higher than that?
Yeah, Mike, if you look, they also bid on the fire alarm systems there. And I think there's a much bigger number there. I know the numbers are shocking, but I know what they're quoting for the PA system. I've recently doubled contracts with twice the amount for a smaller sized PA system.
Thank you.
We're in a lot of trouble. We could do this on PBA. Also, the other thing we have to realize with firearms and speaker systems now under state ed, they're required to remove all of the old stuff, all the wire, everything has to be removed now. Before they used to just leave it, now it's all about being taken out. So that increases your labor that's involved.
That's a big piece, thank you. That's probably the piece.
Got you, all right.
Anybody else have any other questions or concerns? Ready to move it forward? All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Any abstentions? So carried? Do you have any recollections? All right, I just want to thank two individuals. Our middle school principal, Megan Colburn, for over 10 years of employment with the district. Moved up ranks. She's now starting a family and I would like to spend more time with her family. Lindsay Idell, thank you for your three years of service to the district. We were in desperate need three years ago. You stepped forward, you went through all the training. And life does take us in different directions and fortunately you can move on to improve your quality of life for your family. And we appreciate the time that you spent here in Highland, so thank you.
Thank you very much.
Okay. Yeah. No objections.
I missed it.
Okay, our principals, our principals report. Elementary school first. I'm losing it.
All right, so this is obviously something that should have been done January, February, and so on. Here we are. The only addition I need to let you guys know about on the principals' report was the Kids' Heart Challenge that I talked about in there. As of today, right before leaving, this community has done like crazy, crazy things. I can't even get over it. Is $13,837.57 and we have crushed, absolutely crushed our goal of like, I think it was 10,800, I think was our original goal, and it keeps growing daily. And it's wild. It's the next tier that like is the next level that Kids' Heart Challenge keeps telling us that, you know, they were like, oh, well, you guys could potentially get to 15. I was like, there's no possible way in this world that we're getting to 15. We're going, I mean, we got days left. This number is insane, so hats off to the community. It's beyond, it's amazing, so, yeah. All right, so...
So what is it that you have to do now that you've raised all that money for the Heart Association?
We can't breeze over to the next thing? So what I owe, again, for this, did I include this in here? I don't think I did. So I owe a few things. The kids got to vote and the overwhelming response is that I have to kiss a llama. So I didn't think there was any chance that there was a llama anywhere near Highland. Apparently that is not a problem. So we're looking at trying to get one on campus so that we can kind of... And I'm pretty sure that llamas spit, so this is going to be a lot of fun. The other one is, this is another one that kind of hurts, that I'm getting, there's like these paintballs that they make. Not like, you know, but they like these like paint sacks that they're going to, the kids are going to be able to paint the principal, so. Yeah, that one's going to be an interesting... It's going to be an interesting. And then, you know, and then there were some smaller prizes, like, you know, pizza parties didn't really get it. The ice cream parties, all those things didn't quite come in as high as this. I don't know, I think next year we're going to have to put like the goal at like 20,000 or something like that. If we meet that, I don't even know. I'll have to do something crazy, I guess. Yeah. So I guess, I guess questions first and then I have another thing. The PTA president, she was here with the baby. She had something, so like on her behalf, they brought some stuff in. So I guess what we'll do is twofold. I guess we'll do questions first and then we'll do the next step.
Any questions for Mr. McCormick?
All right, all right. Oh, yeah, so, yeah, so Pi Day, 3.14. We did theme song Thursday and the eighth caller was Ms. Lochner, who was beyond excited to come down and pi me in the face, so. She didn't do it lightly. She made sure it is smeared and it got in the nostril and it was a lot of fun. So she enjoyed herself. Yeah. A lot of fun. All right, so because of January was Board Appreciation Month, the students and Ms. Gallagher set up a thank you. And so I'm going to roll this out real quick. What it shows is a fingerprint of every single student in the building. And so the theme we went for this year was thank you for helping us grow. And we have Ms. Samuels coming up with some plants for you guys. So we're going to do a growing theme. And we'll hang this up in the executive.
We can actually hang that in the boardroom.
You guys want?
You might want to hold that up so you can get a really good picture with the...
No, you, no, you can't eat these. Give that to my wife, she'll kill it in about a week.
I would kill it in a week.
Got enough?
You could just leave that there and I'll take it down to the boardroom. Thank you.
Do that. I'll do that.
All right. So we'll get to the things in front of you, but I do have one update. So in lieu of a Spirit Week, because it's already crazy time of year, PBIS had a great idea to do a Spirit Week on one day. So we're doing that on Friday. So there's, you'll see the paper, there's several options students can choose from. They can kind of pick their favorite spirit day and do that on Friday. So, or they can try all of them at once. So we're interested to see how that turns out. So I thought that was a fantastic idea from PBIS, so that was an update. I have one other update too. It was a while ago, it was actually Valentine's Day, which was the day after our last board meeting where we presented. Our NJHS, a couple NJHS students came to me and said, hey, we want to do something for Valentine's Day. One of their classmates in the eighth grade recently had a procedure done on their heart. And they knew that that student and their family was kind of raising money for the American Heart Association. So they came to me and said, we want to help. So they teamed up with that student. We, you know, we kind of liaised between the student's parent and they brought in red ribbons. And the students, they gave them out for free but took donations if students had extra change. Actually ended up raising $262.52 for the American Heart Association, which we teamed up with the parents on. So that was fantastic. It was their idea, and I give them a ton of credit for it, so I thought, I did not put that in the report, but I wanted to mention it because I thought it was really cool. So does anybody have any questions before we get to the blue bags?
Questions?
So you can open your blue bag. So these, what is inside of them, one of them is not student-made, as you'll see. The other one actually was done, Mr. Banks's eighth graders came up with the design for these. They are student-made. So they are made with our 3D printer at the middle school in the eighth grade technology class and are just a fun little desk ornament. You could use them paperweight, you can use them however you'd like. So those were designed by eighth grade students and they have the, they have the board members' names on them. And I think on the bottom it says, does it say HCSC on the bottom? Yeah, Highland. So you'll notice some of them have like, they had to pick some of the pieces out. So again, this is a student project, so we're very proud of them. Mr. Pecatius, yours is actually getting reprinting because the end got cut off, but it's... So it was reprinting when I left for the meeting, but I will have it for you very soon. And obviously, I got, everybody got some, I don't know if you all like peeps, but peeps in the Highland colors. Some got blue, some got yellow, so. So thank you for your service, we really appreciate it. And just a little token of our thanks from the middle school. You're very welcome.
I did have just a comment. I really liked the student wellness data.
Yeah.
It looked like there was just a lot of local groups serving our students.
Local groups, also staff member. We had a bunch of staff members from all three buildings who came and collaborated with us and contributed their time. Also, some people in our building, Miss Hathaway, did yoga. So it was fantastic. We really, we really had a great time.
And I liked the innovation that began now incorporating both our library, the school, local library.
Yeah. Yeah, it was, it was a fantastic idea.
Thank yous.
Absolutely, thank you.
We appreciate it.
Thank you, we appreciate it. Thank you.
Good evening again, all. These mics are sensitive. So no additions, just an update. Couple of meetings back, I had mentioned that we had some BOSI students that had taken part in a competition. And I told you I would get back to you with their names and their places on how they did. Several Highland students who attend the programs at Ulster BOSI's Career and Tech Center at Port Ewen were among 35 individuals who earned medals during the 2024 Skills USA Regional Competition that was held last month in February. The event, which took place in Goshen on February 10th, I was able to attend and watch our students. It consisted of timed trade, leadership, and community service contests that gave participants from across all areas the opportunity to showcase their knowledge in skills in 38 different work-based categories. Congratulations to Catherine Fitzgerald, who took first place in Cosmetology Junior. Sophia Hajiani, who took first place in Prepared Speech. Carl Jacob Haveland, who took second place in IT Services. Ava Mora, who took second place in Aesthetics. And Belen Ocampo Kados, who took second place in Aesthetics Model. We're extremely proud of them, so just a round of applause for all of them. I have two other very short items, but before I get into those, did anyone have any questions on the board report?
I just had a comment. And I really forgot about it at the last board meeting, we're so tied up with other business. But I had the opportunity. Ms. Pecatius actually took me out and we went to see Cinderella, the production here, which was absolutely phenomenal. So I just want to congratulate the advisor and all the adults and students who worked on that. There were so many. It was a fantastic show.
Let me add to that. We had a cameo of our own student representative, Lea Skrell, who was in it as well. So great job to all of them. So the other two brief items that I have, again, in following with elementary and middle schools for board appreciation, which was back in January and then things got postponed a little bit. Our PTSA up here at the high school wanted to leave a little sweet treat for all of you at your chairs. So you see those in front of you. Mr. Opitz has also, he's going to queue up something. We have a short video clip that we'd like to share. Some people expressing their thanks to all of you and the hard work that you do as a school board for our school community. And I will tomorrow pass this along to Superintendent Freer to share with all of you.
To show appreciation to the school board, we will run this through and talk to some students.
Thank you, thank you Board of Education.
Hi. I appreciate the school board. I would like to say thank you to the Board of Education.
Thank you.
I would like to say thank you to the Board of Education.
Yay.
And thank you to the Board of Education.
Thank you to the Board of Education. All right, ready? Can you give us a hand? Oh, we're ready.
Three, two, one.
Thank you, the Board of Education.
And Dr. Mur, did I hear correctly that you're celebrating today?
Well, Mike, thanks for ruining my thunder on the last announcement. Yes, you beat me to it. I just wanted to say happy birthday again to Mr. Opitz, whose birthday is today. Happy birthday. Thank you, everyone, thank you.
Okay, we have most of our directors here this evening, so if there's anything you want to address to our directors, feel free to do it. Good?
I just want to say thank you because we don't have anything to address to you, which means you're doing your job well. So, thank you.
No, I just wanted to say, you know, regarding...
Sorry.
Yeah, regarding the budget presentation tonight, because it does affect these particular departments and they, you know, everybody pitches in. I just want to appreciate the effort and the time that you all give. It's not easy jockeying around drivers. It's not easy jockeying around drivers. It's not easy making sure that the school buildings are all clean when you're not fully staffed and, and many of these departments aren't unfortunately. It's just, we haven't been able to fill these because the job market is what it is. So it does make sense to remove some of them that we can't fill before we have to potentially remove some that do affect actual bodies in the position. But just wanted to say thank you. It's not easy.
Okay.
Okay. I just want to just like get for a feel for the mic. So I'm going to start with the elementary school. There was an announcement made over the loudspeaker acknowledging Women's History Month and Ramadan. And they held a discussion about the book No Voice Too Small to engage students in conversations about social justice, activism, and the power of individual voices. Created a visually appealing bulletin board that showcases the themes of No Voice Too Small. A suggestion box was planned to encourage students to share their ideas, suggestions, or concerns. This will begin to emphasize the importance of student voice in shaping the school community. The group used this article cultivating a pedigree of student voice from association of supervision and curriculum development to explore ways to integrate the principles of student voice into teaching, practices, and classroom activities. At the middle school, modified sports began yesterday and there's approximately a hundred middle school students trying out for the various teams. Softball, baseball, lacrosse, and track will all be well represented by eager seventh and eighth graders. And we look forward to another fun and action-packed sports season. The next Highland Middle School co-rec dance will be placed on Friday, April twelfth, for all the students, grades six to eight. And the last co-rec dance was in the winter, which was a lot of fun, so this one will certainly be no different. Spring is in the air at Highland Middle School staff and students. And they love getting any opportunity to do their teaching and learning outside in our beautiful weather. So don't be surprised if you see classes of students learning outside and enjoying the warm spring days. At the high school, there was an all-county festival about two weekends ago with students from the elementary, middle, and high school playing at New Paltz High School. We had two students selected for the New York State Band Directors Association for the All-State Band, and they performed in Syracuse. They were Ariana Wallen, who played flute, and Sophia Casio, who played clarinet. The music department is now taking band and choir students to see Aladdin on Broadway, which is tomorrow. And this is another wonderful opportunity for students to see live professional performers in action and get a feel of where they can go from being in the music department now. With our Taste of Success programs, last Thursday, we had Duane's Auto Detailing giving a seminar about being business owners and participating in the community. Around thirty-five students had the opportunity to listen and learn. And this Thursday, we have the local karate dojo partnering up with Taste of Success and two of Miss Sailor's CIA students to promote self-awareness, owning a business, and giving back to the community. Which brings me into the Miss Sailor CIA projects. A lot of them are on the move and many of them are wrapping up. Our civics showcase is April thirtieth from six to eight PM at the Highland High School, where everyone's progress and projects will be on display. Shreya Golconda is doing her project on period poverty, which is wrapping up as menstrual products are being placed all around the rail trail sometime very soon, if not already. Cameron Adoma just presented at the New York State Social Studies Conference last Friday. Daisy Ortiz organized a field trip to Woodland Ponds to interact with the residents. This was a huge success and they're likely planning another. There are so many other projects on a roll and I highly recommend that all of you try to make it to the civic showcase to learn more. It's April thirtieth once again, from six to eight here. And those are all my notes. So if anyone has any questions. Cool, great.
Any questions for Lily? Thank you. Thank you, Lily.
Good evening, everyone. I'll be brief tonight. We are in full swing of annual reviews. So far, we've had great attendance from our families, which is always great to see as we put together our plans for next year. The planning doesn't stop at that meeting. Those plans are finalized and then our office is putting out the copies of those IEPs to parents, getting those out as soon as possible for their review after the meetings. On Thursday, we had eight students from high school attend the Career and Services Expo put on by the Ulster County Transition Council. I'm going to be meeting with the teacher who went with them and some of those students to get some feedback. One of the great things about the Ulster County Transition Council is they are always willing to hear the feedback because they want to make it better and more useful for students. So we'll be getting some of that from the students to pass along to them for any improvements, if there's any needed at all. Lastly, at our last PPS meeting, we began talking about all the summer programming for our special education students and specifically at Ulster Bosse's. So Ulster Bosse's does host our students who attend there, who qualify for the service throughout the school year, who will go there over the summer. And then they also take on some of the students who are in different programs and even in some of our in-district programs who require that summer support. So we began that process and with the applications and getting all of the information to them. And then I'll be working with Ms. McCulick very soon on getting those routes planned for the summer.
Hello, everyone. I'll also be brief. I have two items to share with you this evening regarding our UPK program. We have received proposals from four local agencies. The UPK committee is scheduled to convene upon return from spring break for a review of those proposals. Anticipating a positive outcome, we aim to expand our capacity beyond the forty seats allocated for the school year. I will, of course, keep the board apprised of any progress at every stage of this endeavor. Next, in line with our district's commitment to diversity, equity, and inclusion, members of our administrative cabinet are actively engaged in a book study of Biased by Jennifer Eberhart. This initiative builds upon the momentum of our past two summer sessions during which we extended the opportunity to all interested district employees. Last week, half of our administrative cabinet convened to delve into the specific, some specific chapters of the book with the remaining administrators meeting to discuss the book this coming Thursday. This ongoing dialogue underscores our dedication to fostering a more inclusive and equitable learning environment for all.
Three, three. You're welcome.
Okay, superintendent's comments.
Okay. Again, I'm going to be brief because I said a lot in the beginning. But just a reminder, the Ed Foundation Dinner is Friday, April fifth, from six to ten PM, sixty-five dollars per ticket. Please call Becky at eight four five two three four one five two two. I will keep that in my Friday update, but we hope all of the board would consider coming out and supporting the Ed Foundation and the honorees that we are honoring this year. At the last board meeting, I mentioned our snow day giveback. It looks like it will stay, that we will have two snow days to return to the calendar. One, and I actually put this message out to families, so they are aware already. The first one will be Monday, April first. The second one would be May twenty-fourth, which is a Friday. Lisa, I wasn't sure, do we need an actual resolution for the board to adopt that, or is me just announcing it to them? Okay. Very good. Spring break starts this Friday. Spring starts today. I didn't realize that. I thought it was usually the twentieth or twenty-first, but my calendar says today. So must be because of leap year. So happy spring and spring break starts on Friday at the close of school and runs all of next week, the twenty-fifth to the twenty-ninth. An issue that is coming forward that many schools are, in our area, are starting to grapple with is the upcoming eclipse. So a few school districts in Ulster County have decided to close for the entire day because they had many more snow days left. So those two districts are New Paltz and Sawardies. And as of this morning, a few of the others are planning an early dismissal. So I wanted to, some feedback from the board administratively. We've been talking that if we go along and do an early dismissal, that would be for our students to get them home so that they, especially for our younger ones, the eclipse is supposed to happen between two and three-thirty. Many of our elementary students are on the buses from three to three-thirty in that area. That's when they load. So they're on the bus during that time. Our concern is, you know, we, we teach students not to look at the sun, but they see the sun almost on a regular basis. But this is like a once-in-a-lifetime thing. Telling them not to look into the sky, we might not be successful with that. And we wouldn't want to put any children in harm's way. So again, we're going to look into that a little closer with what the rest of the county is doing. But it's looking like many would be doing an early release. I looked at our number of hours. So this would count as a contact day. And we also need to look at the number of hours that we need in a school year. And we are still within the hours because one of the things that we've done in previous years is we've cut some of our half-days out of the calendar. But I would like to announce this to the parents sooner than later so they can make informed decisions for Monday, April eighth. We would stay here as a staff though and use the afternoon for professional development. And so with the board's approval, we'd like to move forward with that and get those plans underway for Monday, April eighth.
Board have any input?
I would, I would like to venture to a early dismissal.
Just a question for the staff. What would the end of the day be for the staff?
The end of the day would be their regular end of the day. Obviously, we would take some time. This is a once-in-a-lifetime thing. I would allow staff, I would encourage them to make sure they have proper glassware or eyewear. One thing we have no, have found is that many of the glasses that are available on the market are not recommended. So encouraging people to make sure they have the proper eyewear to go out and view the eclipse. Or wait to see it on the news that evening, but I will leave that up to the staff. They're adults and we can tell them not to look into the sky and if they choose to not listen, then that really is on them. But telling a fifth grader, a five-year-old not to look into the sky is pretty hard to do.
I know I'm preaching to the choir here, but is there any chance we can get educational packets to the families on things to do to enjoy the eclipse?
I do know that some of the teachers, especially at the elementary level, have been talking about the eclipse and have been planning things for students to do. But we can talk to all of the administrators and try to get something out. But I was also planning on sending in my email, if we were to do this day, to give links of ideas for parents in that link.
Something for them to, education at home.
Any other questions for the superintendent? Thank you. Board of Education, any new business?
Can I just, I brought this up before, but just like listened to Lily's presentation about the two students that made Allstate, but just trying to recognize those kids that weren't mean as well. That's a big accomplishment.
Sure. Old business. We had the cell phone discussion earlier on. I think that was our only old business item. Just a FYI, do have three board candidates that are up for election on May, May seventeenth, sixteenth. Petitions are out, so if those that are running again, please pick up petitions and have as many as you can sign them and return them to our district clerk. And if anyone else is out there that's interested in this high-paying job, please see Lisa and you can secure a petition and run for a school board position. Bosse's annual meeting and budget vote is Thursday, April eleventh, twenty-twenty-four. It's the annual meeting.
So if I could just chime in, that is the meeting that is held at Ulster Bosse's in Port Ewen. That's where our students and all of the culinary students from across the county, they prepare food and a meal. They act as servers. And they, it's really a wonderful evening. It'll be also the night that Bosse's will present their budget to anyone that sticks around for that portion. But if you, if you can only come for the portion where our students are, are serving and it really is, it's nice for them to see us there. So please let us know. We need to have those numbers to Bosse's pretty soon, I think. By April fifth.
Okay, and the district, county-wide vote will be on our meeting night of Tuesday, April sixteenth. That's another FYI. Anything for the good and welfare of the district? We open up the meeting to public comment. Could be general questions.
Good evening, Board and Superintendent Freer. My name is Laura Finch. I am a parent, community member, and educator here in the district. And recently, each of my daughters had an opportunity to take part in the Ulster County Music Educators All-County Festivals, both for band and jazz all county and chorus all county happened as well. And I wanted to thank the board and the district for continuing to support the students and the educators in the music program. This program serves students who may or may not be athletes or academics, but who are certainly talented musicians, if you're able to get to any of the concerts. My daughters and the other musicians from a well-represented Highland received excellent preparation from the music faculty here at the school. They practiced and prepared just like any athlete, mathlete, debater, or other student who would want to make their teachers, parents, and district proud. The girls were excited for and challenged by this opportunity and they carry fond memories of the festival weekends. They continue to be motivated to excel so that they can be invited to return each year. So I wanted to thank you again for fostering and supporting the love of music for my children and all the musicians here in the district. Thank you.
Thank you for those comments.
Hi, Board of Education. Superintendent Freer, I just wanted to say thank you to Mr. Freer for doing the work that he's done over the past few weeks. I, I can tell that it's weighed on him and his presentation today was definitely compassionate and truthful. So I just wanted to thank him for that. Looking at that presentation, as, as much as we say that they're, they're minor cuts, they are devastating to program. And I hope that you continue to look under every stone that we can possibly turn to see if we can salvage some of these positions or all these positions. I'm going to let you know what we're doing as a, a local union. We have been active in this process in working with Mr. Freer. We've sent lobbyists to Albany to, to petition the governor, to petition our senators. We're going this Friday to a rally up in Albany, or not Albany, Kingston with Senator Hinchey to again advocate for state aid for the governor to turn over the monies that each school should be receiving. We are going to, if need be, schedule with the rest of the presidents in the local area rallies up to Albany to push our government to get, return us that money. But I can tell you, we are going to be working just as hard as you are to return that money. And again, there is no better board than the one sitting in front of us to figure out how to solve this problem and, and keep this family together because we have created something really special here. And I just wanted to say that. On a side note, completely different topic, I got permission from my department chair. I hope this doesn't spark any debate or any conversation. We're going to do something unique next year regarding to cell phones at the board, if the board wishes to, to accept it or, or go along with it. As, as scientists, we said, let's run an experiment. So we met with the math department and we talked about our problems that we were having across the board with cell phones. And then came up with a kind of a solution that keeps the autonomy in the classroom, the teacher's ability to control what goes on in the six walls. And what we decided we were going to do was buy the, the lock boxes that student cell phones can go into. And as a department, math and science, we all agreed that we were going to do this together as a group of teachers. So that way, students couldn't pin us against each other. That way, students couldn't, you know, identify certain teachers that weren't doing it and teachers that were doing it. So we're going to be unified as a department. And we're going to have our students put those cell phones in that lockbox at the beginning of class. Then depending on the board policy that goes forth, during times of instruction, when the cell phones are needed, Then depending on the board policy that goes forth, during times of instruction, when the cell phones are needed, we would unlock the box and allow them to take out their cell phones and use the cell phones. Um, an example I saw it the other day of a student using their cellphone appropriately. And there are some students that can do it and there are many students that can't do it. But when you have good classroom management and good structured plans within your classroom, you can use cell phones at limited times. And I watched it in my class the other day, take out a cellphone and take a picture of a note that I had put on the board, um, that they wanted to keep for later so that they could translate it. And that was a good use of cellphone at that point in time. Could they have done it with their laptop? Yeah, they could have turned it around, but it was an in-the-moment moment. Um, so that's something that we have decided as a science department, that depending on what the board puts forth, whether it's in the parameters of what you put forth, that was going to be a solution that we would propose. Um, and trial it for a year. And if it works and other departments jump onto it, that's great. If it doesn't work, then we go back to the drawing board, write up another hypothesis and try another experiment. Um, but that's what we're planning on to do at this point. Thank you.
Thank you, Kevin. Anyone else? Okay, I asked for a motion to adjourn. Motion made by Tom, second by Heather. All those in favor? Nobody wants to say no?